Looks like we're still waiting on Linda, huh?
Linda is here.
I'm here.
Okay.
I think we still have a minute to go. All of our special guests have arrived. Thank you.
It's three o'clock. We're ready to start, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna call the regular city council workshop to order here, our work session. And just to remind everybody that this is something we do pretty much every month. And this is a city council workshop. There's, I don't anticipate there'll be any public comment or discussion in this workshop. This is a session for discussion between the councilors. We're not going to make any decisions or anything, but people are certainly willing to join us and listen. Looks like we got about eighteen participants with us today. So let's get started. The first thing we're going to talk about, I believe, is the draft findings on the view grading moratorium. So Leila, I'll let you take that away.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so today we are going to be talking about the draft findings for the city to implement an official moratorium on view grading. And before I get started, I just want to take a moment and introduce our special guest today. So we have Sylvani Miller from the City Attorney's Office. And Sylvani has been with us on this journey since last year. And she prepared the draft findings. Garrett Phillips is a coastal planner with Crest, and I want to welcome Garrett. He provided some subject matter expertise and reviewed the findings, as well as Meg Reed, whom we've met before, but she is a coastal shores specialist for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And Meg also did us the grand favor of reviewing the findings. I'm going to go through the findings themselves. I sort of put together presentation more for the benefit of the public and folks that may not have read the findings in detail, then just sort of outline the key things. I would say that the point of this discussion is really to answer or address any questions or concerns of the council, which is why I'm grateful to have the subject matter experts here before us, because they can speak with a lot more authority on some of the issues that you may have questions about than I can. And having their review of this document has been very helpful and certainly increases my confidence in the findings. And before, so that's kind of the key thing. I'm going to share my screen and get us rolling here. If I can find the right one. You shouldn't have so many screens open at once. Okay, and do you see just the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that. I'm going to try to make it so I can see all of you too. So bear with me a moment. Okay. So let's walk through it. So in overviews, I do want to kind of give folks a reminder on how forwardings are currently managed in Manzanita, sort of how we ended up here today. And then we'll go through sort of the highlights of the draft moratorium. For those that are watching, it is in the council packet, which is available on the city's website and includes far more detailed language than I will have in the presentation. We'd like to discuss these findings with the council and answer any questions you might have. Talk briefly about kind of the timeline and next steps. And assuming that the council's comfortable with these draft findings, we would move forward with the actual process of adopting a moratorium. So just as a reminder, Goal 18 covers beaches and dunes. And Manzanita's current four-dune plan allows for view grading. And that is codified in Ordinance 95-6. And so that allows the city to do view grading at this time. Again, the way that dunes are managed here, it starts with the comprehensive plan, Goal 18. There's a four-dune management plan, which is sort of an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan, which basically specifies sort of what happens throughout the dune management area. And that extends far beyond just view grading. But there's remedial grading and other activity that's included in that. And the focus of our moratorium is specifically on view grading. Ordinance 95-6 is the four-dune management overlay zone. And so it's within that ordinance. Section nine is where the view grading standards live. So by law, in our own laws, locally, we allow this to happen. How it works at this time is that if the city receives an application for four-dune grading within the dune management area, it's reviewed by the city. It's an administrative process. And all we're required to do is to review that, find if there's consistency with that application with the requirements. And then in the past, the city has just allowed grading to occur. A recent practice that we've had is to require permits from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers. And that was something that we put in there this time because the grading actually impacts areas in the intertidal zone, which are managed by those two organizations and not city. So we felt that it was important to include that. If approved and they receive permits, all grading activity has to occur before April 30th of the year in which the grading is approved. So that's how the administration administrative process works. That's why ultimately, we did have an application that was effectively approved by the city. But then we again required subsequently those additional permits. So we're now at a place where we're talking about actually implementing a moratorium. And I know that previously, there had been the discussion that the city had a moratorium in place, but we did not. There's actual certain legal requirements that we have to meet. We have to develop findings, which is what we're going to be discussing today. And those findings must be based on a compelling need as outlined in the revised statutes. So how the process works is we have to first buy, we have to first provide written notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development at least forty-five days prior to the final public hearing to be held to consider the adoption of a moratorium. We need to make written findings that justify the need for this moratorium. And then we hold a public hearing at that time. And those, at that time, the city council would need to adopt those findings before the moratorium can go into effect. So I've sort of put together a little timeline here. Right now, we're discussing draft findings. Assuming that the council feels comfortable with the findings or can give us feedback that we can address fairly quickly, we can issue notice to DLCD in time to hold a public hearing in November. Presumably, if that is adopted by the council in November, the moratorium goes into effect and we have 120 days to resolve the issue. I think we all know that it's likely going to take much longer than that. And so we have the opportunity to renew that moratorium for a period of not more than six months. And we would need to do that by, I have March 8th here, which is our council meeting in March. But the date, assuming we adopted on November 9th, would be 120 days, would be March 9th, 2023. If we want to, and we still don't have enough time to do that, which I presume that will be the case, we do have the opportunity to continue to renew the moratorium and tell such time that we can reach a reasonable solution to this. And I'll talk a little bit more about why it's likely to take some time to do that, because it will require an amendment to our comprehensive plan. And as many of you know, I'm firmly supportive. And I know all of you are of a robust public engagement process to get feedback from our community before we make a major policy change. And then, once we do that, we actually then have to make some changes to the enabling ordinances that are in place that allow this grading to occur. So that's kind of an outline of the process. And before I proceed, does anyone have any questions about this?
So Leila, is there any limit to the renewal of the moratorium? Can we continue to do that until we're ready to go to a four-dune management plan?
Yeah, and Sylvani can jump in here too, if I butcher this. But the answer is, there isn't for this type of moratorium. However, we do have to demonstrate that we're making progress. So we can't just keep renewing it, renewing it, renewing it, and not demonstrating that we're moving towards a solution. I think anybody who's been involved in a comp plan process knows that those things do take time. So there is an expectation that the moratorium will end. Sylvani, did I get that right?
That's right. That's understanding of the timeline.
So the second question to that is, we are talking about doing the comprehensive plan that obviously is going to take us some time to do. Do you anticipate that this will be part of the new comprehensive plan? Or do you, is it something we'll do prior to the full war process of a comprehensive plan?
I 100% expect it to be part of the comprehensive plan update process. And as we get deeper into it, if that becomes, and we would have to work that out with DLCD and our approach to doing the comp plan. But if that's something that's pretty clearly obvious to us, we could certainly enact that earlier rather than later. But we want to sort of weigh that in the context of doing other updates, because there may be some efficiencies in doing all of those changes at once. So it will be part of our outreach. We know from our recent town hall meetings that, and we got substantial input from the public. I think it was, if I recall from last meeting, 12% of our voters participated in that process. And in my evaluation of that feedback, there's an overwhelming interest in having some limitations on view grading in particular. So we would want to go through that process and then work with DLCD. And I have a slide later that kind of talks about how we actually do those updates. It might be instructive for understanding why it might be helpful to take all of our updates at once, because it's not a small.
Right. No, I totally support doing it in the context of our comprehensive plan. That's excellent. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions on timeline? You're always welcome to ask more later, but. Cool. Okay, so we'll jump into the findings. So just going to go through section by section. And again, this is just sort of the crib sheet from the actual findings themselves. But section one sort of outlines some of the key reasons this whole, all the findings do as to why we believe that this is in the best interest of the city to do this. So the plan that we refer back to in order to allow for this view grading is now 25 years old. Doesn't reflect the current status of the four-dune system or current VEX practices. The amount of sand in the system has increased significantly over time, and it makes it really virtually impossible to grade to the profile dimensions that have been outlined in the plan. More regulatory agencies have indicated that they need to be more closely involved. And so this includes, as I mentioned, the disposal of the sand in the intertidal zone should be reviewed and modified through a separate Army Corps. And OPRD is also involved in that as well. It does not take into account today's tidal flooding and erosion conditions. And the current plan that's adopted is based on the 1982 flood insurance rate maps and not the 2018 maps. So the data is also quite old. We have found that continuing to allow this may result in, see, there's two N's there, but we'll just ignore that, irrevocable harm because of negative impacts to the public enjoyment of dunes during grading activities, destabilization of vegetated dunes from unsupported view grading leads to impacts to both public and private, so private and public development and infrastructure, unknown impacts on coastal shoreline resources such as razor clam and western snow, snowy plover habitat from sand redistribution, unknown impacts on ocean resources by sand displacement in the intertidal zone, further establishment of European beach grass, which is currently allowed in the plan, rather than promoting native beach grasses or other dune vegetation for stabilization purposes. And having worked with the Army Corps, I mean, we know eradicating European beach grass is probably not ideal, but it is considered an invasive species. So having some updated information on what other types of vegetation could be used to create dune stabilization, again, best practices would be worthwhile. The unstudied impacts on public resources and nearby public properties that relate to current and future anticipated seasonal tidal events and flooding and erosion. Sections two through five really look at things like sand being redistributed into the public ocean shore recreation area for the benefit of only a small number of private landowners, despite there being really minimal public need, benefit, or justification for that view grading. And I think as many of us who were involved in the hearings around this, there is an overwhelming public opposition to the recent application to view grading, which was a signal to us at the city and the council that we should take a harder look at this. Existing public ordinances, regulations, and other applicable laws inadequate to prevent irrevocable public harm from development in the affected area. The moratorium is limited, and it's limited to ensure that the needed supply of housing types, commercial and industrial facilities within or proximate to the city are not unreasonable and restricted. So it does not remediate dune grading and construction grading on vacant lots. The alternative methods for achieving the objectives are unsatisfactory. View grading requires permits and approvals that are administered by other agencies. And those processes require the city acknowledge that applications for grain, grading in the area meet the requirements of the plan. The plan is outdated, and as I experienced, we may be obliged to acknowledge compliance despite the city's significant concern about view grading, its negative impacts on storage, storm surge protection, flooding and erosion, wildlife, long-term dune management, recreation, and other public harm. In section six, it only highlights, so only restricts view grading. So I just want to make that clear, and does not prohibit grading for new development for remedial grading. In fact, I signed an approval for some remedial grading that had to happen on an existing home and sand alteration for public access and safety. So public access and safety is still an allowed activity. It is not anticipated to have an adverse impact on other local governments due to shift in demand for housing or active. I sort of put this in here as a public service announcement, because in the town hall comments, I received a number that, from folks saying, we should limit housing growth and we should limit development until we update the comprehensive plan. This is one of the many reasons why we can't do that. It is also not anticipated to have adverse effects on public facilities, services, and buildable lands in other jurisdictions. And it is not anticipated to have adverse effects on the overall population distribution. So even if it did, even if the impacts of having this view grading did result in any of those impacts, the city still finds that public harm would result. And that is because long-term effects of view grading in the four-dune area for view purposes only, according to an outdated plan, will have a significant adverse effect on the city of Manzanita, its citizens, and its visitors. And it benefits a very small number of people. The long-term effects of grading in the four-dune, according to an outdated plan, will have greater adverse effects on other local governments than the moratorium because of potential unknown impacts on the public beach and coastal resources. So with that, the recommendation from staff is that you direct me as the city manager to issue notice to DLCD, assuming we reach consensus on the findings. And then you direct me to continue our effort to update the comprehensive plan, specifically Goal 18, to address this issue. And so with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and open it up for any questions or discussion of the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody have any questions? I know we've talked about this a lot in the past, so this isn't like it's totally new information in front of us. But I think those are some really good reasons you had up there, findings in fact, and why we're doing this process.
Leila, I did have one question. It seems like when we first started talking about this, that we reflected on Goal 18 and whether Goal 18 should continue. My memory is that whether it should continue to exist, or at least that we needed to modify Goal 18. But my sense was, there might be some benefit in not having Goal 18 as we go through the update on the comprehensive plan. Do you have any discussion about that, or have you changed position maybe on that?
Not at all. And perhaps Meg can jump in here too. So we have to respond to Goal 18. It's a requirement of state law. But what we would do is, assuming there's consensus and support from the community, we would change Goal 18 to reflect the community's current feelings about that, which would mean not allowing view grading in particular. Meg, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that. But I do know we have to respond to Goal 18, because it's part of the statewide land use system.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just clarify that Goal 18 has multiple provisions within it that talk about things other than four-dune grading. So there's things related to where development is prohibited in certain types of land, beach landforms that are subject to ocean flooding. There's provisions around where you can place shoreline armoring. It's limited to only areas that were developed as of January 1st, 1977. You can't destroy desirable vegetation, other than for like construction of a house. You can't diminish groundwater resources in dune areas. There are things like that. So if we're doing grading, it's only one of several provisions. So you still have to comply with all of those other provisions in the comprehensive plan. But you can, the option to view grade is an option. So you can prohibit view grading in the future, if that is the direction of the council.
So not all provisions of Goal 18 would be, would we have the ability to modify? But view grading is one that we would have the ability to modify. Is that what I'm hearing, basically, you say?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's an important distinction, just because it kind of goes back to your suggestion earlier in your presentation that oftentimes we're limited as to what we can or cannot do. And this is just one really good example of that. So it's important to understand that.
I just, I guess I'd like to hear from maybe Garrett and Meg, and certainly Sylvani, about how compelling these findings are. I don't see anything in the findings that I wouldn't likely agree to. But some seem more compelling than others. And I suspect we're going to get a contest at the public hearing. So I'm just curious, given the cumulative weight of these findings, do you see them as presenting a compelling case for a moratorium? I mean, obviously, that's the goal. I just want to make sure, test the strength of the weight of these findings. And just curious if Garrett or Meg, in particular, have any thoughts on that.
So I reviewed the findings with Leila, and they seem reasonable and compelling to me. I don't think I have any qualifications or disclaimers to add to that.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
Anybody have anything else?
The one thing that I think is really important, in the community, I'm hearing concerns about a moratorium preventing us from doing safety, the kinds of safety issues. And it's very clear that it is just view grading. And I think that's really important to emphasize. I was delighted that that's where we are right now.
One, I guess one other question I would have, and I don't even know who to address it to. But going into, we're headed into the winter season here sooner than later. Is, would there be advantage or would there be an opportunity to enhance our observations of the dunes going through the winter season? Or is there adequate oversight happening right now that we can use in our discussions going forward?
I think there's probably a good amount of information already. But it would probably be good information to have another winter season and see what happens. I'm not sure how it is there right now in Manzanita with the width of the beach. But I know in other places, it's been, the last couple of winters have been pretty erosive. And there's been less beach building in the summer. And that does set things up for, to be another, a challenging winter, this coming winter, if you don't have that beach built up again. So I think there are other areas that are much more vulnerable than Manzanita is. But it's certainly a good thing that there are robust dunes there right now, because that will continue to provide protection over the winter season.
So is there something the city should be doing to create observations or volunteer? I mean, I guess I need an education about how that's all handled, either at the state or county or local level.
The Department of Geology and Mineral Industries does conduct surveys of the dunes in certain areas every year and sometimes multiple times a year. And they have had that dataset for a few decades now. However, if the city is thinking about doing an updated four-dune management plan, one of the components is an updated background science report. And that would probably include hiring a consultant or a geologist or someone to do that report. Garrett might be able to talk more about that, because they've been doing that for the city of Seaside, and they've done it before for Cannon Beach. So that is something to consider, was, is whether you want to start that process now or after you've kind of got, had some public comments come in.
I would just add to that. Thank you, Meg. That part of what folks ask about when we're talking about a comp plan update is that the things that take time are not just the public outreach, but there's technical studies that go along with those. And so it would be my recommendation that we do that study as part of a comprehensive plan update, because we will need to do that work in order to sort of demonstrate we're still in compliance with Goal 18 on the other measures that Meg indicated. And then if the public comment is such that view grading is something we should not include as an option in the future, we would want that evidence as part of the process in order to support our adjustment to the comprehensive plan. And so then we can budget for that, because I imagine it's not an insignificant amount of resources. And we did not include that in this year's budget.
Aren't there grant potentials coming up or something like that in 2023?
Yes, so in October of 2023, DLCD has their technical assistance grants for updating comprehensive plans and the other enabling ordinances.
So do we understand when, when we might be engaged in a comp plan update where we're actually doing it?
Yeah, so my goal originally had been to do it, have a scope of work prepared and ready to go by November. But I am anticipating that the next council will sign off on the scope of work. And so my goal is to have that before then, February. So I'm working with DLCD to do a training of the new council and planning commission. We'll have at least two new planning commissioners as well and to sort of jointly present those. We'll have at least two new planning commissioners as well and to sort of jointly uh present those uh. Options to the council so that we can then get kicking on that um early part of next year. But we are, you know, I will say that we actually are already on the path. Um, the. Town halls that I've been holding and the outreach we've been doing. Has been very instructive for me to understand which chapters of the comprehensive plan. Uh, will need to be updated because they may not all need to be updated. And so I really firmly believe we are already on the path to doing that. We will have a significant amount of public outreach. Completed by the time that we hire a consultant, and so our resources can be spent more towards doing technical. Analyses and we don't have a consultant starting from ground zero. They'll be getting a pretty uh big leg up because of the. Just sort of overwhelming and um thoughtful feedback we've received from the community thus far.
And I guess, you know, I'm thinking out loud here in some respects, but I, I, I guess that's why I raised the question because if we don't look at some technical. Uh, research this winter, then you're into, because it doesn't do any good to do it in the summertime. So the next. Season would be the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. So you're in, by the time you get that completed, you're into significant time lapse between now and then. Before you could use that data in a comp plan update. That was my, that was my only concern is. Are we missing out here this winter um for data that we could be using to do the cut up? Other people who are smarter than I will figure all that out and I'll be basking in the sun somewhere, so.
Lucky you. Well, that's a good point, and as vague mentions, uh, Dugami does collect that data, so not all is lost. And I just connected with the, the new staff person at OPRD, and I know that they're. Doing some initial research with OSU and I'm going to learn more about that. So there's. There's research that will be happening, uh, just won't be initiated by us, but we will certainly benefit from that research as we initiate our technical studies.
Anybody have anything else? Well, it sounds like we're on the path to shoot for the November council meeting to do a public hearing on this, on this moratorium, correct?
If that's the consensus of the council, I'll get to it. Yes.
I'm sure that's a consensus unless somebody, I see anybody. Objecting, I don't think so. This, we've been discussing this for a while, so they just got to keep moving the ball down the field, I guess. So uh. Anybody got anything else on the subject? I think, I think we're good to go.
Great. Well, thanks again to everyone that's participated, in particular Garrett, Meg and Savani. Um. We'll get going and we will have us ready for you. Meg, you'll be hearing from me. Um, the notice and Savani and I will work on finalizing the findings to get this posted for the November meeting.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next thing we're going to talk about uh. Our auditors have been in town and uh. I met with them. Few days ago, and I think we had an update or something on that.
Yeah, I'm going to hand it over to our accounting manager and Nina. Hello.
Afternoon, Mayor Council. Um, just wanted to pop on and give a quick update about our audit. In your workshop council packet, we had a letter that they asked we supply counsel. Um, basically just stating what their charges, what they're looking for when they come here. Um, and some a high level overview of things they had found in the past, mostly um separation of duties and issues with that. They completed their audit on the thirtieth and it was a challenging one for me this year. I had. Three months in the old system, nine months in the new system. We switched to express bill pay this year, so um a new credit card company. Payments come over automatically and some things weren't hitting the GL accounts right, so sort of had to sift through some of that. I had to make a lot of spreadsheets. Um, but we made it through and it was successful. We were able to get them everything they needed to complete the audit. Um, got to ask a lot of questions and clarify a lot of things, so feeling confident that next year will be. A smoother and a lot easier for me anyway. Um, and the auditors will be here in December because I know some of you, your term ends, so you'll all be able to be a part of that and ask questions. And um, see those findings. Does anyone have any questions? No questions is good.
Again, we're shooting for their report in December, right?
Yes, and they confirmed to me that they'll be able to meet that deadline, so I'll let you know if anything changes on that, but we should be good to go.
Alright, sounds great.
And I just want to say that despite the challenges, Nina, as usual, rose above. Uh, got the auditors everything they needed. It just took a lot of effort on her part and a lot of that had to do with the. The having two systems in place. Um, so just much like how it affected us with the budget, um, it was a similar kind of. A challenge and as she did with the budget, she took care of it, got everything that they needed and sorted through any of the issues that they had. So I just want to congratulate her. And really hope for her, um, especially that both budget and uh audit next year will go a lot smoother because we'll be in one system, so it will.
My hair is turning gray.
You know, Leila, uh, it might be helpful um not to spend like two minutes for the people viewing this. Um, just to explain the auditing process for local government. How that works, why it's done, what our requirements are. Uh, I know in the past questions have been asked about the auditing process and. Might be a good time to, a little education.
Sure. Well, actually, I'll kick that to Nina to see. She's, she just went through all the details. I could probably give you a good high level, but I think Nina would be the authority on that.
Sure. Um, audits are required every year. If you go more than three years without completing an audit, they can dissolve the city. Um, basically, they're looking to make sure that we're spending taxpayers' money the way we say we're going to. So they're looking. Um, to make sure we spent according to the budget and everything is on the up and up. They're looking at internal controls and practices and are we meeting expectations? Do we have division of duties? Um, are we protecting the city from fraud, things like that? So they're really combing through mostly all my work. Making sure that I've done everything I'm supposed to do and we're spending the money the way we're supposed to spend it. Does that sort of answer?
Yeah, I think it does. So I mean, it's the uninitiated to government, you know, may not have experienced the auditing process in whatever career that they. That they chose, but um it's certainly an important component of our. Of our financials, um, and it's important that they, and we have had. Year after year of good result, other than the fact that we don't have enough staff to have a separation of duties, which we would never probably will have. And so that finding comes back every single time, but it's not something that's not unusual to small government, so.
We are getting closer with that, though. We are definitely getting closer, so.
Good.
Yeah, we are. One of um Nina's responsibilities in her new position and one of the things she has been doing is trying to. Create more arms length, so making um, having other members of our staff review accounts payables and look at invoices. Um, so that helps do further that separation of duties. Um, and one other thing to add about the audit is that it really is the accounting of our. Financial health, and so the budget is a plan. So that's what we hope to do, what we plan to do, but everything that goes into the budget. Um, we base on the audit, so that's, that's the actual accounting of how much resources we have, and as Nina said. Um, each page really indicates a fund, how much was spent out of that fund. Um, it ties back to the budget resolution that is passed with the budget committee. It sets a number of um different categories in which we can expend, so for example, professional services. Um, as, or I'm sorry, personnel services are different from materials and services, and so we have to make sure we're spending. Within those line items, and that's what the budget uh does. And one of the things that um Nina has done this year that the city is actually. Not done in the past is set up our system so that it now fully reflects. The budget itself, and so um when we're producing those budget reports. We had to do a lot of explaining in previous years of, well, this line actually means this. Uh, now that's set up in a way that it does match the budget, so there's a lot more consistency and. Makes it a lot easier for us and for the public to understand how their resources are being sipped. So. The budget's the plan, the audit's what we actually did, um, and it becomes the foundation for us. So as soon as we actually get the, the audit, which I'm psyched we're getting it in December. Means I can start preparing the budget for the next fiscal year because we will have the actuals from the end of. The fiscal year that ended in June. So it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
That's a great point, so thank you for raising that.
Okay, everybody. Thank you, Nina. I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
Thanks, Tina.
Uh, I'm going to turn this over to Linda. We, I know she's been working on for some time here a draft resolution or a draft, I should say, in the city manager's job descriptions. I turn that over to you, Linda.
That'd be great. So um, we haven't updated the city manager's job position, or job description since uh. Since Jerry Taylor was here. Uh, not only has the city changed a lot, the responsibility of the city manager has changed a lot. And it's very important that the, the position description reflect the duties of the city manager. It's important because it's um kind of her guidepost of what we expect her to do. It is also what we, what we base our evaluation on. At the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, so it's, it's, it becomes even more critical that it reflect exactly what she does. Um, part of the process was to go to the. League of Oregon Cities and to ask for their recommendation of best practices for city manager. Uh, job descriptions based on our size and the activity that we have. Uh, they sent me a uh. Quite a number of, of job descriptions that they felt were excellent job descriptions. I was able to go through those. And kind of pick and choose what was more, what was consistent with the city of manage, with, with our city manager. Um, they became guideposts that we use to develop uh the position description. I'm very pleased with the update. I think it is an accurate reflection of what our current city manager does. Uh, and what we hope city managers in the future will do. So I am uh bringing this forward for uh input from the council or for any reflection, any additions, any thoughts on. The city, the city manager job description, which was in your packet.
Anybody have any questions for Linda on this?
Uh, well, so Linda, you, you've been uh getting input from us uh by email um. For a few weeks now, and I, I just want to make sure that. Um, you have an opportunity to sort of highlight the. Specific changes or the, the major changes in the description. Uh, I think for the most part, you've been, I think, getting positive uh. Feedback.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any, any pushback. It, the uh, I, I would say the major difference, and I appreciate that question, Jerry, the major difference is. That in the uh, the old job description, it really focused on administrative. And uh, the new job description really focuses on leadership and management. And what, what this particular position does, which is very different from the old position. It breaks it down into specific duties based on what our expectations are, so. The duties would be, I'll read those, the city council support, so what are, what we expect. As a city council from our city manager, personnel management. Um, which is a, a critical component of what our city manager does. Fiscal management, which is obviously the budget, and community relations, and I tried to incorporate in each of those topics. Um. Specifics that really fit what we do, um, particularly in the community relations. I think that, that is becoming a more and more important part. Of the city manager's job, so I spent quite a bit of time. Uh, talking about meeting with private citizens, uh, general meetings, uh, information sharing at that level. Um, and then uh probably the other, I think. Uh. My view of a title change, uh, it is, I look at uh the city manager as our CEO. And city manager, and I think that accurately reflects what our expectations are of our city manager. Does that answer your question, Jerry?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I want to make sure the public, uh, in attendance has a sense that, you know, we're not just nodding off on this, that uh we have to engage.
A lot of work. I, I've been working on this for probably seven months.
Right.
Just in terms of getting the information, and it is on the website, is, is, is in our packet, and I encourage people to look at it and review it. Um, I, we're at this point because, obviously because we don't make any decisions in the workshop, we have a month. Before, bring it before council for approval, so there's plenty of time for input.
Yeah.
Um, and observations, and I look forward to hearing from the community and uh any additional input from council.
The only thing that I'll mention is, thank you, Linda. Um, you know, you have a, a significant background in this kind of work. Uh, and the city is lucky to have you to do that, otherwise we'd be hiring somebody. To go out and do it, and so that, you know, another, once again, we save a whole bunch of money because we have expertise in-house to be able to accomplish. A task that otherwise we'd have to spend a lot of money on, and I know how much work you've put into this. Uh, based on the emails that I've been getting from you about it, so um. I just want to express my appreciation, and I know the whole community appreciates uh the work that you've put into this.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that.
So the plan is this will be on our agenda in October to actually approve this officially.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, sounds great.
And for what it's worth, uh, Linda did also reach out to me, and I think the. The position really does more accurately reflect what I do, um, what I think the expectations of council. Is of a city manager in this day and age, and so one of the things that I want to express my appreciation to the council for is. Supporting me and supporting my staff. To take on some of the more administrative aspects of this position, which allows me. To really focus on um the, the really important elements of this job, such as. Being your chief policy advisor and being able to have the capacity to do that research and to. Support the work that you all are doing, um, which when I'm sort of burdened with a lot of um. More administrative duties, it makes it extremely challenging with the issues that we're facing as a community, I think it is. Um, and again, you know, Linda really spearheaded this. And, and uh, I appreciate the, the, the acknowledgement. That the work that I do is, is pretty different than um perhaps what has been done in, in the past, and so. Um, I think it sets the city up for success um in the future. As well, so. For what it's worth.
Well, uh, we've buzzed right through our agenda items today in good order. Is there anything else we need to discuss this afternoon before we adjourn for a break before our council meeting is nine at six o'clock?
Well, I, I don't have anything.
If I don't hear from anybody, I, I guess we can adjourn. It's three forty-seven and we'll adjourn and we'll reconvene for the council meeting at six o'clock, okay?
Great.
That was efficient, Mike.
Yeah, good work done today, too.
So quick, it even scared me.